The International Court of Justice where Namibia is making representation in the case of Israeli occupation of Palestine.
... for states, paving the way for independence nineteen years later in 1990. It is because of Namibia's experience with apartheid and its long fight for self-determination that we cannot look the other way in the face of the brutal atrocities committed against the Palestinian people. Mr. President, members of the court, we ask you not to look away either. Rather, we appeal to you once again and the historic and ongoing injustice by upholding the fundamental rights of a dispossessed people who have endured fifty-seven years of a suffocating occupation. Today, Palestinians are enduring collective punishment in the besieged Gaza Strip, with civilians being killed in continuous and indiscriminate bombardments at a scale that is unprecedented in recent history. This state of affairs, this hell on earth, represents a stain on the collective conscience of the world. Civilized nations cannot and must not accept images of children covered in blood with gaping wounds, of men and women crying in despair because of the helplessness they feel. However, in the midst of the ongoing tragedy, I wish to say the following to the people of Palestine. This advisory opinion is an important moment in your long fight for independence, and I leave you with the words of our founding president and father of the Namibian nation, Dr. Sam Neoma. A people united, striving to achieve a common good for all members of society, will always emerge victorious. And of court, Mr. President, members of the court, I thank you, and I now respectfully ask that Professor Phoebe Okoa be called to address the legal questions before the court.
I thank Mrs. Dosab. I now give the floor to Professor Phoebe Okoa. You have the floor, Professor.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the court, it's a great honour for me to appear before you in these proceedings and a special privilege to do so on behalf of the Republic of Namibia. Our presentation is in three parts. First, I will make two general observations on why the court should answer the request in its entirety and why Israel's occupation is illegal. Then I will focus on Israel's policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory that grossly violate its obligations under international law, specifically the prohibition of apartheid and racial discrimination and the principle of self-determination. Finally, I will address the legal consequences that arise for Israel, for third states, and for the United Nations on account of these violations. As a threshold matter, Namibia reiterates, as do the overwhelming majority of states in these proceedings, that the court has jurisdiction to render the requested advisory opinion and that there are no compelling reasons for the court to decline the request. Namibia notes that there is also wide consensus among the participants on the legal status of the occupation. Namibia makes only four brief observations. First, insofar as the law of occupation envisages any belligerent occupation as a temporary measure immediately following military operations, Israel's prolonged or permanent occupation breaches the law of occupation. It is a de facto annexation in all but name. Second, Israel's occupation in and of itself is unlawful under general international law. This is because it violates the Charter of the United Nations and peremptory norms, specifically the prohibition on territorial acquisitions through illegal use of force, the principle of self-determination, and the prohibition of apartheid. Third, successive resolutions of the Security Council and the General Assembly have declared Israel's occupation to be illegal and called on Israel to end it immediately. These resolutions provide an independent source of authority for the illegality of the occupation. Finally, the continuation of the illegal occupation does not absolve Israel from its obligations and responsibilities under international law. This is consistent with your own conclusions in the Namibia advisory opinion that physical control over territory and not sovereignty or legitimacy of title is the basis of state liability for acts affecting other states. In both its written and oral submissions, Namibia focuses on the prohibition of apartheid and of racial discrimination. This is in part on account of Namibia's history as one of the few countries that was subjected to this egregious form of systematic and institutionalized racial discrimination. We also do so on account of the fundamental importance of the court's 1971 Namibia opinion, where this court declared that the policies of apartheid constitute a denial of fundamental human rights and are a flagrant violation of the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter. But above all, we do this because notwithstanding the egregious nature of apartheid as a state delict, as a violation of a peremptory norm, and as a crime, it has received virtually no clarification beyond the specific circumstances of Southern Africa. An advisory opinion on threshold questions of apartheid will therefore assist the General Assembly in respect of its own action in identifying the key elements of the illegality and in formulating appropriate responses to Israel's discriminatory practices in the occupied Palestinian territory. Specifically, we invite the court to clarify three aspects of the obligation. First, we respectfully ask the court to make it clear that the prohibition of apartheid is not limited to Southern Africa in the last century. It extends to Israel's policies in the occupied Palestinian territory today. Article three of SAD places all state parties, including Israel, under an obligation to prevent, prohibit, and eradicate apartheid in territories under their jurisdiction. This is also the conclusion of the SAD committee. The 1998 Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court, negotiated after the end of apartheid in South Africa, also recognized apartheid as a crime against humanity without temporal or geographical restriction. Second, the court should also confirm that the prohibition of apartheid binds all states as a peremptory norm. In your decision in the case under SAD brought by Qatar against United Arab Emirates, you acknowledged the universal character of SAD is confirmed by the fact that while eighty-two states are parties to it. The International Law Commission and its special rapporteur on youth cordons, as Judge Lardy then was, has also expressly recognized the peremptory character of the prohibition of apartheid. Finally, Namibia invites the court to clarify the definition of apartheid. Namibia aligns itself with other participants that the definition in Article II of the Apartheid Convention incorporates the three key elements of the delict under international First, the state must engage in one or more inhumane acts. Crucially, these take the form of violations of fundamental human rights within an institutionalized framework of systematic oppression and domination. Second, these inhumane acts must be directed against a racial group or its members. Finally, the state must commit this inhumane act for the purpose of establishing and maintaining domination by one racial group over the other and systematically oppressing them. Other participants have already made extensive statements on the discriminatory and inhumane acts carried out against the Palestinians as a racial group. These policies and practices are too many to enumerate in the time available. They include laws that discriminate in matters of citizenship, ownership and transfer of property, and freedom of movement; the systematic and excessive use of force against Palestinian civilians; the arbitrary killings and mass incarceration of Palestinians, including children; the illegal settlements; the discriminatory residency regulations; and crucially, the denial of a Palestinian identity by refusing to recognize them as a people with the right to determine their own political destiny and to pursue social, economic, and cultural Namibia's submission will focus on the final requirement, the purpose of establishing, maintaining domination, and systematic oppression. First, the term domination signifies a pervasive, all-encompassing, serious form of control over a group. Second, oppression implies prolonged cruelty, reflecting a sustained violation of human rights. Third, systematic implies the organized nature of violent acts and the improbability of their random occurrence. Namibia shares the view of other participants that Israel's policies and practices meet the evidentiary standard for establishing the state delict of apartheid. The Israeli government's openly articulated aim is to ensure Jewish-Israeli control of all facets of Palestinian life, as evidenced by legislation affirming Israel as the nation-state of the Jewish people with unique self-determination rights reserved for Jewish individuals only. It is clear from all the available evidence that these discriminatory practices are not accidental or fortuitous, but are designed for the specific purpose of privileging Jewish Israelis over Palestinians. The fact that the practices in question may have other collateral objectives, such as maintaining security, is irrelevant. It will suffice if the primary motive is discriminatory, even if it also serves ancillary It follows in Namibia's submission that Israel's policies and practices are inconsistent with the prohibition of apartheid as a state delict under international law. Furthermore, these discriminatory practices, in the context of prolonged occupation of the Palestinian territories, violates the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. As other participants have highlighted, these discriminatory policies and practices are directed at fragmenting the Palestinian people. These elaborate systems of administrative controls undermine group cohesiveness by dividing the Palestinian people into a number of administrative domains or groups with varying degrees of rights. This strategic fragmentation of the occupied Palestinian territory into bantustans makes Palestinian life burdensome and, in many cases, unbearable, forcing them to leave their Perhaps the epitome of discriminatory laws negating the Palestinian right of self-determination is the 2018 Basic Law passed with constitutional status, which boldly declares that Israel is the nation of the Jewish people and that Jewish settlement is a national value. I will now turn to the final part of my submission. I will first examine the legal consequences of Israel's violations irrespective of the status of the occupation. Second, I will examine the legal consequences arising out of the illegal status of the First, Israel must bear consequences for its violations. This is the most elementary requirement of the law on state responsibility. As others in these proceedings have highlighted, this includes the obligations of secession and the duty to make reparations for more than five decades of harms inflicted on the Palestinian people. The government of Israel has a legal duty to dismantle all the vestiges of systematic racial discrimination and oppression that permeate all aspects of Palestinian life in the occupied territories. As the state of Palestine itself said on Monday, Israel must bring to an end the annexation of Palestinian land, dismantle existing settlements, and recognize the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination in a viable state of their own. Second, states are under an obligation not to recognize Israel's breaches of peremptory norms of general international law vis-à-vis the Palestinian people. At the same time, the obligation of non-recognition is matched by a parallel and positive duty of recognition of the Palestinian people's right to self-determination realized through a viable and independent state of Palestine. Here, we ask the court to pay particular attention to the historical context of these proceedings. Admission to the United Nations, unlike the League of Nations, was not automatic. It was conditioned on the state accepting to uphold the values and principles contained in the Charter, including self-determination. The admission of Israel was no exception. In the wall opinion, you observe that when Israel proclaimed its independence, it did so on the strength of the Partition Plan Resolution of the General Assembly. As is well known, that plan envisaged two states, one Arab and one Jewish. The Israeli Declaration of Independence makes this plain by recognizing, and here I quote, "the natural right of the Jewish people to be masters of their own fate like all other nations in their own sovereign states," unquote. If that logic applied to the self-determination and statehood of the Jewish people, it must, by the same token, also apply to the self-determination and statehood of the Palestinian people. We further ask the court to consider whether there may be circumstances where political discretion in matters of recognition gives way to a positive duty of recognition, especially when it is necessary to safeguard a peremptory norm. And here, Namibia aligns itself with Jordan's written submission that all states are also under an obligation to recognize the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, including by exercising that right within a viable and independent state of Palestine. Since Israel's policies and practices violate peremptory norms of international law, the occupation itself is unlawful. This entails consequences for Israel, for third states, and for the United Nations. In the Namibia opinion, you already set out the legal consequences of unlawful occupation. There, you said that once the court is faced with an illegal situation, it would be failing in the discharge of its judicial functions if it did not declare that there is an obligation, especially upon members of the United Nations, to bring the situation to an end. In that opinion, you recognize the clear obligation on South Africa to put an end to the illegal occupation and withdraw its administration from the territory. The same consequences must, of necessity, attach to the illegal occupation by Israel of the Palestinian territories. Secession cannot be contingent on external factors, such as the successful outcome of negotiations. As pointed out by some participants in these proceedings, a withdrawal contingent on the outcome of political negotiations effectively gives Israel a veto over the future of the Namibia invites the court to set a strict time limit within which Israel must be asked by the General Assembly to bring the occupation to an end without conditions. Failure to set a strict time limit has the perverse effect of being treated as a quitsance in the present occupation and permission for it to continue indefinitely. Of course, Israel has defied this court and ultimatums issued by the United Nations organs many times, but it is precisely for this kind of egregious violations of peremptory norms that a regime of countermeasures was contemplated in the now widely accepted International Law Commission draft articles on state responsibility. Equality before the law is a cardinal principle of the United Nations Charter. No state, not Israel, should be exempt from the comprehensive regime of sanctions. Moreover, Namibia reaffirms the position held by the majority of participants that all states are under an obligation not to recognize, assist, support, or contribute to the continuation of the unlawful occupation. This is also in line with your own settled jurisprudence. In the wall opinion, you confirmed that obligations of third states include the obligation not to render aid or assistance in maintaining the illegal situation, that all states must refrain from all forms of assistance, including transfer of arms and political support that de facto perpetuates the occupation. In Namibia's view, this means in particular that all states are under an obligation to ensure that companies under their jurisdiction or control do not trade in Israeli goods or with Israeli companies originating from or linked to Israel's illegal occupation. Mr. President, members of the court, I thank you for your kind attention. This concludes Namibia's oral submissions. Thank you.
I thank the delegation of Namibia for its presentations. I invite the next participating delegation, Norway, to address the court and call Mr. Christian Gerber to the podium.
All right, there you have it, Namibia's submission. Essentially, Namibia telling the International Court of Justice that Israel's occupation in Palestine territories is illegal and unlawful and violates a number of international laws. In fact, the court is currently hearing, as you would know, fifty-two countries on the legality of Israel's occupation of Palestinian territories since 1967. I mean, the proceeding started on Monday with Palestine presenting and South Africa following thereafter, as well as other countries on day two. Yesterday, we heard from China as well as Iran and their submissions. Now, in studio, I'm joined by international news editor Sophie Mukwena to unpack what Namibia has said and also other developments within these ICJ hearings. Sophie, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. So, last month, Namibia made a significant point in which they condemned strongly Germany's decision to support Israel in this particular war at the ICJ. I mean, let's unpack what transpired today then in terms of Namibia's submissions, starting off with the justice minister, interestingly paying tribute to the late former president Hagge Gengob, and of course, you know, what else has been said today?
Well, you know that just before the passing on, President Gengob, on behalf of the Namibian government, issued a very strong statement and rebuked the Germans after the government there took a decision to go public to say they are going to support Israel. Namibia reminded Germany that you have forgotten you committed a genocide in this country. The Second World War revolved around you again. Now you are again supporting a situation where we see that there are trends that can lead to genocide. And by doing that, Namibia was the first African country to do that and come out strong. Unfortunately, at that time, President Gengob was not feeling well, but he saw it fit to take a stand. When I spoke to the former president of Mozambique yesterday, Joakim Chisano, one thing that he spoke about in relation to President Gengob was that he fought against discrimination and he was totally, totally against oppression. And therefore, it is no surprise that he took that stand when other powerful countries were criticizing South Africa for using legal means to try and settle a dispute with Israel where they don't agree on what's happening in Gaza. Now, the Minister of Justice of Namibia did just that to pay tribute to the fallen hero of Sadek, who stood up to support the Sadek country using the example of Namibia. Today, the presentation, as you heard, centered around Namibia as a case study when it was oppressed and violated by the apartheid regime, where the United Nations even took a decision to support Namibia and Namibia was given an observer status at the UN while South Africa was declared a apartheid system, a crime against humanity. And therefore, drawing the parallel to that, in the same way you treated us, please do the same with the Palestinians because the case is similar, even the measures you imposed, the decisions you took, and in line with the Geneva Convention, the Genocide Convention, but also the UN Convention, because you know that the League of Nations before the United Nations, any country could join, but the United Nations to ensure that we are able to manage the conflicts around the world, because the main objective was to ensure maintenance of peace and no war again. There were prescripts in terms of who must join the UN. One other issue that is clear in the UN Convention is that you cannot be an aggressor, cannot be an apartheid state, or you can't discriminate, but here is Israel being a member of the United Nations and doing exactly that.
And on that point, I mean importantly, Professor Phoebe Okoa was trying to reference, you know, the point that Israel must bear the consequences, and that, I think, essentially was largely what her statements was or submissions was. Just maybe one or two highlights from her presentation, and then just take us through in terms of what is going to then happen today in terms of other presentations and tomorrow.
Reparation, as you know that, even in this case of Namibia, Germany has agreed on a reparation process, even though they haven't agreed on terms and how to do it. There is the decision by Namibia to say there must be reparations for five decades stemming from five decades to Palestinians who have suffered. Secondly, Secondly, dismantle the settlement, move away, stop those policies where you are suppressing the Palestinians. And then going forward, we expect Qatar to take a position and make a submission just before two. And I think Qatar's submission is very important because today as we speak, last night, Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu finally agreed that a delegation from Israel must go to Paris as we speak to go and engage in the ceasefire talks. And therefore, as we speak in France, we expect Qatar to facilitate those talks with other countries such as Egypt, the United States of America and of course Israel. And therefore, it will be important to hear what Qatar is going to say because it will give us an insight of what's likely going to happen in France today. And the last important one, I think, later today, the United Kingdom. It will be interesting to hear what the UK is going to say. We saw when there was that vote on Algeria resolution where America vetoed the resolution.
For the third time.
The UK didn't veto, even though it has got veto powers. France didn't veto either. UK abstained. And if US didn't veto, that resolution could have seen the light of the day. And therefore, you can see, UK is now trying to strike a balance and there's so much pressure in parliament, in the United Kingdom, where even the prime minister is now struggling and remember, he wants to be re-elected. The same with the Americans, Biden is under pressure and he wants to be re-elected. And therefore, it will be interesting to hear what the United Kingdom, a friend of Israel, will say but trying to strike a balance.
And I'm glad you mentioned that last point because I think it's important to know how useful this process that's currently happening in the ICJ is going to be. Because a lot of talks are around, will Israel then come to the table as they start talking about a two-state solution? But Sophie, thank you so much for your time and of course, unpacking those developments there. That is SABC International News Editor Sophie Mukwena.